Okay. Welcome to our meeting. We're happy to be here at the Petaluma Campus. We acknowledge that we gather at Santa Rosa Junior College on the territorial land of the Pomo people in Santa Rosa and the coast Mewoc people in Petaluma, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the people who have stewarded it through the generation. Thank you for attending. Those of you who are here in person and then also those of you who are attending remotely, we thank you for your patience during this time. Our board is committed to the continued education and safety of our students, faculty, staff, and community stakeholders. The Sonoma County Public Health Officer has issued recommendations for public meetings available on their website, which all participants are urged to follow. Whether you're here in person or remote, please wait to speak until you are called on by the chair. If you are attending remotely, you cannot see other attendees nor use the chat function to speak to each other. As always, the board requests that presenters keep all presentations to the following time limits: three minutes for public comments, five minutes for monthly updates, eight minutes for board presentations, employee of the month, and special presentations. Public comment will be allowed at appropriate times. If you would like to make an in-person public comment, there are cards to fill out. I already have one here that's available that you can fill out. If you're here to make a public comment, for a remote public comment, there was the option to submit comments by email or phone prior to the meeting. Or please raise your hand. You'll see a button at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialing in, you can use *9 on your phone. So, thank you very much. Starting now, we have no reportable actions taken in closed session. And moving on to approval of the minutes, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September. All right, then we'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We're good. Next, we have one of the best things about the meeting. Every month, we have our employee of the month for October, and presenting that is going to be Jeremy Snotherman. Welcome, Jeremy.
I'm not the one that deserves any of the applause. But thank you. Thank you, Board President Battenfeld, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong. I am very privileged today to be here to present employee of the month to Amel Gerke. Amel has been an instrumental part of the Office of Institutional Research for the past three years. One of the things about institutional research is that we tend to be invisible. We are always in the background. We are working on the data. We are working on information that really supports what's going on with the side of SRJC in the district. And in Amel's position as the coordinator for the current Technical Education Employment Outcome Survey with the Chancellor's Office, he represents SRJC beyond just the borders of our district. He represents us and the state like everything that goes on. And not only does he represent SRJC, he also represents SRJC Petaluma, since he does work in the Office of Institutional Research House here at Petaluma. So whenever he goes out, whenever people understand what's going on with CTEOS, that's the face of Amel, and that's the face of SRJC, and that's the face of SRJC Petaluma. So his time and commitment and his dedication, not only inside of the office, where he provides an invaluable resource to all members of the research staff, he provides an invaluable resource to literally the entire state. And so that's why I think he's extremely well-deserving of being employee of the month, and I'm very glad and honored to present this to him right now. So with that said, what is Amel? Before you have your words, just really quick, here's a certificate to the Culinary Cafe. This is for SRJC, the office staff, and members of Petaluma, that together to give you the initial $200 of good credit as a thank you. And of course, you have your plaque. Thank you very much, Amel.
Thank you, Dr. Snotherman, for those very kind words and for the applause and the opportunity to be here. For those that don't know me, I graduated from Santa Rosa Junior College, I think sometime around 2002. When I attended the Petaluma Campus, there was about the two buildings out front and the bookstore. And, you know, life brought me all types of places. I was in the Peace Corps in the Republic of Georgia. I earned my bachelor's from UC Irvine. I earned my master's from the New School in New York. And then I went to Long Island with my wife when she was working on her PhD at Stony Brook University. And I came back to this campus, and I couldn't believe what had changed and how this campus looks now. And to be here and accepting this in the new student center is a great honor. This is such a great space, and I'm so proud to be a part of this community. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you for all you do for us. All right, now, moving on to public comments, I have one yellow card. I'll call them then first. Beatriz Camargo and Loretta Esparza.
Good afternoon, Steam Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, and college community. My name is Beatriz Camargo. I am the coordinator for the high school equivalency program, which serves migrant farmworkers with the goal of obtaining a high school equivalency certificate. I am also the president for the Latinx Faculty and Staff Association.
And I am Loretta Esparza, and I am public services librarian and the longitudinal librarian, and also vice president for LFSA.
And so we are here today to provide a statement of support for undocumented students, and we have a statement that we want to read on behalf of the LFSA executive team. "We, the LFSA executive team and membership, stand in support and solidarity with undocumented students at SRJC and at large in the United States. Despite the appalling ruling which deemed DACA unlawful, we urge our SRJC community to stand in solidarity and continue to uphold SRJC as a safe haven for undocumented students. We want to thank Dr. Chong for sending out a statement of support to the college community supporting DACA students. We urge the district and the Board of Trustees to continue to strengthen the resources necessary to ensure undocumented students are able to continue their education. This ruling continues to create citizenship uncertainty in families with mixed status. The fear and anxiety students face is a trigger for unbalanced mental health, which is a barrier to student success and focus and contributes to increased levels of attrition amongst our Latinx students. Thus, we urge SRJC to strengthen our mental health services and applaud the hiring of additional bilingual, bicultural staff who can address the growing mental health and needs of our students."
"We also urge members of the college community to support our scholarship programs, which help the undocumented students. And lastly, we want to invite all members of the college community and members of other affinity groups to stand in solidarity with our undocumented students and to learn and stay informed on how we can best support this vulnerable population. And you can do that by attending free webinars during Undocumented Student Action Week, which runs October 17 through the 21st. And more information about these resources can be found on SRJC's Dream Center webpage. Thank you very much."
Thank you. Do we have anybody else in person for public comment? I don't have any other cards, but do we have anybody remotely signed up? Okay, I am going to close public comment then and move on to monthly updates, reports from members of the Board of Trustees and others, starting with our college president report, Dr. Chong.
Good afternoon, everybody, members of the board, college community. Today's the day I want to announce my retirement. It's a time after 12 years and more than a decade of serving this college. It's been on and a privilege. And I'm really proud of all that we have accomplished during that time. And I want to thank the board and everybody in this room and on the Zoom for all your support, challenging me to be a better leader, a better person. And, you know, I really feel I came and accomplished what I came here to do, and that was to really try to leave the place better than it when I founded it. And I really believe that, not just because of the buildings that were built through Measure H, which I'm profoundly proud of, but the look of who's in the college now and who's leading the college. And I feel this is the right time to hand off the mantle to the next person. And I feel really comfortable with the leaders that I see in the audience, that you are going to continue to make SRJC the great college that it is. And, you know, it's been a great ride, and I always felt like, you know, I wanted to leave kind of on top, so to speak. And it was really challenging during the fires and during the COVID. But I really feel proud of our college community that we didn't tear apart. We came together. And so there's so many things and so many thanks and gratitude I feel in my heart right now. But I'm really leaning, my wife and I, you know, we're a team, and, you know, we're not going to be strangers. We plan on staying in Petaluma, staying in Sonoma County, staying involved. And so the next eight months, I'm going to be working till the job is done, till it's time to turn the lights out. So I want to, again, emphasize that the board has been well-prepared to begin the search. They only hire one person. I think President Battenfeld will talk to you more about that later. So I think the transition is going to be very, very seamless, you know, very, very seamless. So, you know, it's just great. And I'll just end with a quote by the late Kobe Bryant, who said, "You always think you have more time." So it's my time, and I'm ready to go, but I'll be with you for the next eight months, and much love to all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm afraid the rest of you are going to have to follow your reports. I'm sure it's going to be hard to follow. Anyway, we still have our meeting. So bond update with Seraphin Fernandez.
All right. Hate to be next to this one. But here I am. Good afternoon, President Battenfeld, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, and Steam College, SRJC College Community. I'm proud to be here today making this report, especially since we are hosting the meeting in a location that has been brought to you by Measure H. So I was going to put a slide together, but then I said, hey, what better presentation than the physical space? So look around you. Everything you see in here, the spaces, everything is a Measure H project brought to you, like I said, not only by Measure H, but a lot of great people that had vision and worked together. A lot of coordination took place. But, you know, talking to some of the student success team members today, it sounds like it's a great success for Petaluma and for SRJC. Also, here at the Petaluma Campus, we are working on the construction center. We have received approval from DSA on the design plans, and we have submitted the plans for review and approval also by our sponsoring agency, the Economic Development Administration, EDA. Upon their approval, we will put the project out to bid. I am also happy to say that we submitted a request for additional funds due to the cost of increase of cost of construction to the EDA, and we were successful in securing an additional $3.9 million for the project. Great thank yous to Catherine Williams, who is very instrumental in putting together the package and securing these funds. We plan to put the project out to bid in December of this year, start construction in March of next year, and hopefully have a ribbon cutting ceremony in June of 2024. Also, at here at the Petaluma Campus, we are working on relocating the tutorial center to Mahoney Library permanently. We will relocate the media services department from where they currently are into Call Building and bring together Tutorial Center and the Library Center at Mahoney. At the Santa Rosa Campus, part of the planning that's going on is we are planning to demolish Barnett Building. This building's life has come to an end as well. And so we are feverishly working to relocate the occupants at this time. So ESL will be moving temporarily into Lar Call, and Hep will also move temporarily into Annalee Village, where the foundation staff currently is, once the foundation staff moves into their new location. And then their final and permanent home will be at Cuny Hall, first floor. So we will be doing some renovations to the first floor of Cuny Hall after the STEM building is complete. And then we will relocate these two departments, in addition to the ethnic studies faculty, into Cuny Hall. Projects in construction, where Busman IT area is currently under construction. Asbestos abatement is complete, and so we're in the process of demolishing the area. You do have on your agenda today a change order, a very small change order for $2,879. We had some additional demolition that we had to do. And so that brings our change order percentage to 0.55%. The Towser Gymnasium swing space at Annalee Village has started. We're almost complete with that demolition. That project is moving really fast. Again, just to remind everybody that we are making temporary space available here for the occupants of the Towser Gymnasium. Our plan is to move them in January. So taking them out of Towser Building and then allowing us to start the renovation of Towser Building in the spring of next year. The Lonely Center for STEM Education is making great progress. Again, we are getting the building exterior completed. The window framing actually already started, and then we're also moving really well inside with all of the interior framing and mechanical and electrical plumbing. I'm happy to say that we have had our classes start touring our buildings as part of their class instruction. Last week, we had the interior design and drafting class tour the building. The foundation building is also almost complete. We are looking for installation of power from PG&E in November and hoping to move in the staff at the end of the year. So we are tracking very well on this project. And you see some pictures of the foundation board and our board touring the site a couple of weeks ago. Want to thank everybody who attended the Garcia Hall ribbon cutting. This was a very successful event. We had a lot of people. It was really an enjoyable time. I want to bring your attention to the final change order for this project, Resolution 3122. This change order basically is reconciling the time extension and compensation for that time extension to the contractor. Also, on your agenda today for approval is the purchase of the audiovisual equipment that will go to Bloom Technology for $387,897. Ashon Farm, the cabinets were installed in September. We have all of the furniture and cabinetry now installed. And all of the work by our contractor, Rich View Builders, is actually complete. And so for that reason, we have notice of completion on your agenda for approval. Now, as you're aware, we did have change orders over 10% on this project. And so we we had additional change orders that we actually bid out. We felt that we can bid them out, get better pricing, then add it as an additional change order, increasing that percentage of change orders to reduce contract. And so we bid some of this work out, and that work is the plumbing, some plumbing work that still needs to be done on the project. So we bid that out separately. And Matrix AG is the low bidder for the plumbing installation. So you have that contract on your agenda today for approval for $141,000. One thing also, they just want to provide this clarification, is that we approve notices of completion based on contracts. And so the contract for Rich View Builders is now complete. The student housing project, I want to share some amazing images. Glad to also say that these images are a little bit outdated, because we have more work that has been completed. The building has now topped out, meaning that all five floors are completely framed out from the exterior. And also, the roof concrete has been poured. So this project is making great progress. Windows are actually being installed. Some of the interior finishes have started in restrooms. You also see another class that toured that building a week ago. This is our construction industry and building trades class. We had over 30 individuals, 30 students tour the site. Here are some other images from the interior that you get to see. And then finally, again, you have some items on your agenda for approval. I've gone through most of them. There's also the notice of completion for the district-wide outdoor Wi-Fi project. This is not a Measure H-funded project. This was funded by CARES grant, but that project is complete, and we're asking for your approvals for notice of completion. And then also, we're all asking for approval of the design-build contract to FRC for the Emeritus Hall Roofing in HVAC Modernization. So that design build contract amount is for $7,497,276. Again, this is the complete modernization of the mechanical systems, HVAC, as well as the roof, a complete replacement. And that does conclude my report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any board member question? Thank you very much. All right, we do not have a Ashon Farm site update today. So I am going to move on to the student trustee report. Trustee Delashay Carmona Benson.
Okay, thank you, President Dorothy, and the board, and Dr. Chong. Can you see Dr. Chong? He's going to make me cry. And the college community, thank you for being here. Quite a bit of a report than the busy bee this month. One of the things that I managed to do was to get elected as our new grad for Region Two. I'm over 14 colleges now at the SSC. So I plan to bring SRJC's voice to 14 colleges. And taking my position, one of the things that I started was our student trustee council, and we have kicked off tremendously. We have positions filled to represent our Black students, our reentry students, our APAD students, our Latinx students. We just got a sign-on for our Native American students, our international students, our LGBTQTIA2+, I hope I said all those numbers and letters right, our recovering students, our sports students, our second chance students. And we plan to have even more student representation as the council grows, so that we can get the perspective of all of our students and hear how all the different areas of students and learning students, learning community students are doing. Our Latinx rep has already put it together in Ole Ole Viva La Fiesta event. You guys will be hearing about that very soon. Our first event was going to be with our very own Congressman Thompson, and sadly, it has been canceled. But surely, we could move it to another date after all. But we are also having a Tea with Tea, and I hope everyone is listening on this one. The Tea with Tea is where you get to sponsor a table at this event. We are inviting all of you guys, anyone who wants to have a table, to please come be part of it. You will be in charge of the table decorations and feeding and your guests at the table. You're sponsoring your table. I hope that the board is willing to have a table there. That would be great to have you guys out there. That's just some of the fun events. Also, FLIP, I talked to our FLIP students, which is our first generation students, and they are having a Halloween party this month with a live band. Can you believe that? A live band coming to SRJC. It seems like we're getting back to normal here. I'm the president of our Disabled Student Coalition, and we're going to be having a prom soon that you guys will be hearing about soon. And we also are, with the help of our great advisor, Kim Starkey, we're going to be teaching our DRD students about their ADA rights and their nine plus one rights. I've been speaking to our BSU students, who are really concerned about the staffing at our Salbonas Center. We need more staffing in there. Regina obviously, it's such a success in there. It's such a success, and so we need some more staffing in there. Also, the student trustee council's going to be working on some resolutions this week in our meeting. And one of the resolutions, for sure, is bringing more all-gender bathrooms to our campus. Also, we would like the quad that's in front of Burnley to be officially called the Pomo Quad. So we'll be writing a resolution on that as well. So you'll be hearing about that. And one of the things that I asked the board that I was able to do was to acknowledge one of our students every month. And so this month, I would like to acknowledge our very own Felix. Felix is actually here today. If you could stand up, Felix Santiago, pronouns they/them. They are studying psychology. They've been here since 2017 and has been a student working with the Queer Resource Center. Felix has been on the Queer Action and Family, and also a member of our student trustee council, Rep. LGBTQ. Also was a member of Metta and the LGBTQTIA2+ president committee and has also been a member of our SGA a few times. And also, the plans are to transfer to a four-year college and to study in Mexico and continue to serve their own community. When Felix is not busy, which I personally know Felix very well, and that is a very odd moment. Felix is at home with Horpon, their dog, and that's it. Felix, we'll give Felix a hand. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to board member comments. And I'm going to start to begin with, as president, you know, thanking Dr. Chong for his years of service and dedication to SRJC. And, you know, well, I think we'll have lots of time, since I'm still counting on him being here and working hard on behalf of the board for the next academic year. Lots of times to reflect on his accomplishments and celebrate as we continue our work this year. But also, to, I mean, just let everybody know that the board is going to be engaging in a hiring process to seek a highly qualified and diverse group of candidates. Of course, we will be soliciting input from the SRJC community at many various stages of the Of course, we will be soliciting input from the SRJC community at many various stages of the recruitment and hiring process. And to get that going, I am going to be appointing an ad hoc committee of the board. That is going to develop a clear process and a clear timeline. And I'm going to ask the ad hoc committee to present that to the board in November. And to approve that so that it'll be a clear, transparent process and timeline that, that will go through. That will again get us the pool of, great pool of candidates. And again, I think we will have an excellent pool of candidates. We're an excellent educational institution. You know, just from all the state task forces I'm involved in and the meetings, you know, we really do have an excellent reputation as a college. A lot of that, of course, is due to all of you here, all the staff, faculty at our institution. I mean, everywhere I go, they, you know, they, they, we talk about, they talk about, you know, the JC being a role model, the prizes, the awards that we get. For our innovations, for our work. So I think because of who we are, because we have a great engaged student body. We have really, really strong community support. And so I think that's really going to, I feel real confident, you know, about the process. And, and about the fact that, you know, we really will be able to. This summer have a new superintendent president who will really continue our tradition of excellence and, and service to our community. And again, thanks to Dr. Chong very much. And so Eddie, thank you. So if there are any other board member comments.
I'm going to be really nice, okay? Actually had an opportunity to, to, to be on the hiring committee when we hired Dr. Chong just a few years ago. Or was that over a decade and a half ago or so? And it was quite a process we went through because we had a lot of candidates that came to the table and interviewed and. We just didn't feel we had found the right person and we, we went onward from there and Dr. found Dr. Chong. And he's done a great job for us. He's represented us so well in the community. And very, very proud to say that I had an opportunity to sit down, sit in on that hiring committee that hired you. And thank you for all that you have done for, for our college and our community.
I don't know. Well, there were a number of things I were going to say, I was going to say, but. You know me, I, you sort of get me, right? Sometimes the raw me. I'm the only twisty that ever cries in a meeting, right? But that's okay. Um, you know, I just want to say to you that this one huge job the board has. This responsibility that is above all other responsibilities that we have. We make jokes that, you know, Dr. Chung calls all of us boss and he's our one employee. But the process we're going to go through is going to be so much easier because of all of you. And I really mean that. I mean, the whole college community and trustee Battenfeld referred to it. Is, is the quality of the school, the quality of the reputation of the school. You're going to make our lives easier and I thank you for that and appreciate that. Now I'm going to go to the regular board comments I was going to make if I'm allowed to, is that okay? Is I went and saw Stand and Deliver and it was awesome. And thank you. Went to Shown Farm and that was awesome. And I also want to give a shout out to all of you that supported. SRJC Petaluma's fundraiser a couple of weeks ago. We had lots of staff and faculty and the whole community came out and supported and it was, it was awesome. And the community was responsive and generous with us. And so thank you for that.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything to you Frank because I didn't want to get teary eyed, but since I see that it's okay. Okay. So I just want to tell everybody that. Frank grew on me. When I first started as a student, I blamed Frank for everything. If it was raining, if I woke up late. If the food sucked in the cafeteria, I blamed him for everything. And I just thought that he was to blame for everything. And I learned quickly that you don't run the school, but you do a really good job of trying and I love that. And also for those who don't know me, I'm Afro Latina and that Latina part is Puerto Rican. Now, a lot of you guys are probably used to Mexicans. That's a whole nother aspect, but to deal with a Puerto Rican. Only Frank and maybe Robert and Byron in this room can tell you about that. And that's not an easy task. And Frank has done it with ease and with grace. And Lord knows I have been wrong on so many occasions and. Had to eat it, but he served it so well with a nice little platter and silverware. And you have set the bar high. And I really look forward to being on any part of this hiring committee because I don't know if I'm just going to sit back and watch. In hilariousness is who's going to fill those shoes because you really made those shoes pretty, pretty big. I never thought at fifty-three I could say that I could grow more because you know, when you're Afro Latina and Puerto Rican, you think you know it all. But Frank definitely has taught me a lot in these past three years and I really want to take the time to thank you for that. And what Frank told me, yeah, you guys, I knew he was retiring. Wasn't I good? I didn't even tell you guys, but. So what Frank told me was to make these next eight months fantastic. So I will tell you guys to strap on your seatbelts. It's going to be a ride. Thank you. And thank you Frank.
Okay, trustee Martinez. I'm not trying not to cry, but. It's kind of hard. It is. I'm like the youngest on the board and. There's the professional, there's the, I'm your boss and there's the, this friend. And I have seen the college tradition, so many things. And especially within the Latino community and the space that you created for us. And of course, we're going to complain because we always complain. It's never enough. But it isn't just one person's job. It is all of our jobs. But as a professional, I thank you for the guidance. Opening just like the la shade, just you always have to learn, you always have to grow. But I think it's the honesty, the transparency, the respect that you've shown me. Bring, you know, even when I came in and said I was going to be part of the board, you were very honest that I wanted to be on the board and you were very honest and transparent. And shared how tough this job was going to be. And I was very grateful for that. I'm grateful that I came into a board that is open, respectful, especially of you, the decisions. That you've made, that we've made collectively. It really has been eye opening. I work in higher ed, I work in student affairs. I've worked in all of the systems. I see a lot of things and trust me when I say that this place is in a better place. Than so many, not just what it was before, but throughout the state. And I could say actually even outside of the state. You have developed and the institution has developed so many amazing individuals. And like I say, I take it for my little part from my Roseland, from Southwest. And from the Latino community and Latina community, you know, I come here and I share all the time of what they're doing, how they're doing. And that's because you've been in the lead of transforming the institution. And honoring what an HSI is and working to make it a tribal entity and MSI, all of those things that are not just words and acronyms, but actually that we reflect that. And so I thank you for that. And as also as a trustee, thank you for that. I thank you for not blocking us from making decisions. That could be seen as radical or just controversial to really help our institution transform, to create student leaders in this community. And I will tell you this one last thing, as someone who knows and was mentored by your sister, she would be extremely powerful. So thank you.
Trustee Ben Wells.
I was trying to. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to Dr. Chong. Thank you. Since I've been on the board, you've been welcoming from day one, he, the day I was elected, he. I think you called me that night. And but even before that, I had met Dr. Chong Long before, when he first came here. To Sonoma County and you've always been welcoming, always inviting me and many people from our community, the Latino community in particular, to different events. And, and you know, for no reason, just, just to be inclusive from, from day one. And so I want to thank you for that. And, and I want to, I guess, just kind of echo some of the things that have already been said about. This being the biggest job that we have. Dr. Chong has been trying to prepare us for a long time now. And my only regret, of course, is that I only get to serve with you for a short time. But I have learned so much from you in the short time. And I think trustee Martinez is absolutely right that you've allowed us to be who we are. And I just appreciate that, you know, that I never felt like I couldn't vote the way I needed to and, and to be who I am. And, and that really goes a long way, I think, for any trustee or any elected official for that matter. And I'm just want to reassure you all that I think you know that we take this next big job really seriously. And they're such big shoes to fill. So, so big. So I don't know if we'll find another Dr. Chong, but we'll, we will do our best to find the best applicant out there. And, and I think Dr. Chong's right that right now at this moment, this college, this institution is in the best place. And it's, a lot of it is because of you and all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Peer pressure. I'll, I'll go fast. I'll go real fast. I just want to plus one what everyone's already said. I think it's pretty clear here that. What you brought to the college, what you bring is going to be hard to fill and also really a legacy that you're leaving behind. And just really quickly, I think I can just also plus one. Your steer and your leadership for me, I think I'm the newest one on the board, started at day one and has continued throughout. And I don't take that for granted. I appreciate it. And I think. It's very, it's, it means a big deal to me having attended the JC. And now I'm here in a position to elect the new president. That swirls pretty heavily in my mind. And I think you've given me a lot of confidence to be able to do that. You've given me a voice at this table. You've, you'll call me and tell me where I'm right and where you think I'm wrong. And you've helped me grow, you know, in a very short amount of time. And I think I just want to make sure that we pause for a second and recognize that. I'm on a human, I'm on a very humanistic level, you're, you're above and beyond just what that job description says. And, and we just have to be really thankful for that. Really, really thank for that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to reports to chair this meeting. All right, Academic Senate Nancy Persson.
Good afternoon. Before I begin my report and the timer starts, I'd just like to say something to Dr. Chong. That's all right. Dr. Chong, I distinctly remember when you came for your open forum after your interview. And you may have heard this story, but others haven't. And I heard that if I may lovely New York accent come out of your mouth. And being from Long Island myself, I naturally stepped up to the microphone and asked you the very professional question, Yankees or Mets? To which you said, I'm an eternal optimist. So of course I'm a Mets fan. So, Dr. Chong, I'm really sorry about the Mets. You definitely deserve better. So thank you. In all seriousness, I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for your optimism and your attitude. And all the good advice you've given me over the years, whether in this position or any other. Okay, so Board President Battenfeld, Dr. Chong, trustees, college community. It is my sincere pleasure to meet with you all here at Petaluma where I began my career at SRJC twenty years ago, almost to this day. Spent six months with the temporary library in this very building. I will now share with you some specific information regarding our academic senate work. But I ask that you take the time to read my full report I've sent to Zara. As it contains the full text of comments shared regarding the new SRJC mission statement on your agenda today. Faculty and senators expressed a strong desire that you consider their input as you work on our new mission, vision, value statements. So I have provided you several pages of verbatim testimony from them. I'm only going to read a couple of excerpts out of this report because I really want to spend my time focusing on one agenda item that we recently discussed, which is guided pathways. With regard to accreditation, we've made significant progress toward addressing the requirements identified by the accrediting commission over the past month. This week, the Academic Senate Exec Committee or ASCC will appoint a number of faculty to this group, a work group that was approved. So these individuals will collaborate with our BPAA and new SLA coordinators to identify strategies for achieving the requirements set forth by the ACCJC. We're looking forward to hearing from the group and providing input towards this goal. Last week, the body also moved to permanently increase the size of ASCC from three members to six. The body further called for us to establish a work group to design proposed language to amend our bylaws to reflect this change. This is especially gratifying to me as there is a very heavy workload associated with the Academic Senate Executive Service. And there's great value in diversifying the range of expertise and ideas this larger group offers. In addition to making it possible to share this workload a bit. Onto guided pathways. First, I just want to commend the Academic Senate senators last week for what I think was probably one of the more inspiring conversations I have ever had the privilege of being present at. The ASCC met twice with representatives of the ASCCC, Academic Center for the California Community Colleges, to prepare for this guided pathways initial discussion. We have such a large outstanding balance of funds from the first round of funding of the initiative and we're poised now to receive a second round of funds. SRJC has labored long and somewhat fitfully over guided pathways. Over the past year, we've put five projects into place which are ongoing but need more support. We sought the advice of ASCCC in helping us strategize for an effective discussion and action regarding guided pathways at SRJC. And I'm pleased to say that the first full discussion of this topic at our October fifth meeting was thoughtful, focused and rich with ideas. We acknowledge that to date, our guided pathways efforts have been largely faculty driven and conversation around them largely limited to a curricular focus. The intent of guided pathways is to move beyond curriculum to hold high expectations for student achievement while providing commensurate support services to make this achievement possible. Senators noted that having a guided pathways liaison to facilitate effective communication at SRJC would be helpful. They also commented that guided pathways needs an official home at the college. That guided pathways need a strong faculty voice, while others expressed the need to expand participation in guided pathways efforts to include our classified professionals and administrators. Senators suggested that by creating a district wide committee of some type, we could help prevent duplication of efforts such as that we have seen recently by two different groups addressing student support services. Senators supported the continuation of a guided pathways effort led by the academic senate, but there were many comments indicating support for and the necessity of broadening participation in this effort to include our classified professional colleagues, administrators and students. If the systemization of guided pathways is to be a success here. Multiple other comments noted that there are many classified professionals, especially in student services, who interact closely with students on a regular basis. And that these professionals can play an important role in helping determine recommendations. Others noted that part of the chancellor's vision was the systemization, systemization of guided pathways support for students. But what we do locally is a decision we need to make based on our programs and our student body. Well, that went quite fast. I have like ten more pages to read. But I won't. I do want to mention Dr. John Stover, a senator and the executive secretary to the ASCC, who was recognized multiple times and they do so now. For his dedication to the coordination of our guided pathways efforts. dedication to the coordination of our guided pathways efforts and his unofficial role as guided pathways liaison. His efforts gave us an idea of what we could accomplish if we were to formalize the position of GP coordinator. Executive Dean Matthew Long has also provided significant support for which I thank him. Senators noted that we need an established conduit, that the projects in place now are not one-offs, that these efforts should be seen as a living, breathing thing. Senators indicated they want to see the academic senate ensure that recommendations that were made are carried forward. For example, part of the mapping and scheduling project was set aside. This was disappointing. And the academic senate, through input to a formalized committee, could make recommendations to keep such projects moving forward. I have a lot more comments to make, but I'm not going to abuse my time. And I know you all know how to read. So I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Classified Senate Debbie Weatherly.
Good afternoon, Board President Battenfeld, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, and colleagues. Congratulations to Emile Gurkey for the honor of being awarded Employee of the Month, and nicely done. I love that they picked somebody from Petaluma for that award. Our next event will be on Halloween, and we are hosting a luncheon potluck with a costume contest that is open to all, not just classified. This was a past tradition in our district, and we are happy to bring it back. Look for more information as the day draws closer. Classified Senate also will be orchestrating Giving Tree once again. And while the holidays may seem to still be far off, we must start this process early to be successful. So look for the emails on that. Vice President Holcomb attended our recent Classified Senate meeting. There were enrollment updates on the work group and SLO accreditation progress and some discussion of what it might take to reach fiscal stability. Sandy Segala, our SEIU president, also attended and gave us a brief update on the current elections for SEIU with a call out to fill seats. Classified Senate encourages working in collaboration with SEIU to make classified representation strong in both camps. Our senate is working on the draft of a new constitution and bylaws. We will be bringing it forward when we have a complete, have completed our task. We are looking forward to working smarter with less and looking at what we as a senate may not be doing anymore. The statewide Classified Senate, which is FCS that I am proudly a FCS president emeritus from, has been selected to manage a grant from Institute for Evidence-Based Change, I EBC, in the amount of $367,000. The key outcomes for this grant are to include institutionalize and sustain caring campus at California's community colleges. Support the development of a management infrastructure to support caring campus California transitioning to the California Community Colleges Classified Senate. Implement a professional development program designed to foster and support leadership roles among the classified professionals at California's community colleges. So we're very excited about that. At the last FCS board meeting, our interim chancellor Daisy Gonzalez was in attendance and spoke of her support for classified professionals. She responded favorably to many questions asked of our constituent group. And while I attended on Zoom, Kathy Matthews actually was there as our area representative and attended this meeting in Sacramento. Classified Senate was invited to participate with the chancellor's office on a Zoom session. This was an opportunity for feedback for the search for a new chancellor from classified professionals. There were many concerns and suggestions in the selection of our new chancellor. Now that would have concluded my report had Dr. Chong not made his announcement. Although I knew about it earlier, I didn't put anything in my report because I didn't know when he was going to tell us. So, Dr. Chong, thank you for your service here. I also was on the hiring committee with Terry. And I seem to remember a promise being made to us that you would stay as long as the other presidents. Do you remember that, Terry? There was something said? Yeah, yeah. See, we're in agreement. See, we can take advantage of that. So, you know, we're really sorry to see you go. We understand. But remember, your work isn't over yet. I know you're going golfing this weekend to the golf tournament, but your work is not over. You have a few months to put in. Okay? So you always say that we're your boss. So we're holding you to that. So we're hoping that you have a wonderful retirement, but remember, it's a few months away. Thank you.
Thank you. The Student Government, Abria Tillman. Yep, right. If you go up there, because that's where the cameras are. So that helps for the folks who are on Zoom to see you.
Awesome. Hello, everyone. My name is Abria Tillman. I am the Student Governing Assembly President at SRJC. And I am going to give you guys my report. And this is my second report, I think, this year, but my first time in person. So thank you for having me. Dr. Chong, hate to see you go, but we have a meeting next month. So I'm still going to see you. Also, it was very lovely to hear our, our student trustee, Delashay, recognize Felix. Hey, hi. Happy National Coming Out Day. It was awesome. Okay, so, so at SGA, we have had some special guests, which has been great. Our latest one has been Byron Reeves, who is our brand new interim senior dean of students. And it was lovely to have him there. A lot of support, a lot of love. And we look forward to the collaboration that's going to come from that. We also had Art H. from the Windsor Public Safety and Training Center come by. We also had Jeremy Smotherman come by. We had a representative from the foundation come by, and also someone from the housing branding come by and do a special report. So if anyone would like any type of student inquiry of some sort, SGA is the great way to start. And so we'd love to have people come and just do a special report, and you could talk about whatever concept you want to bring forth. But thank y'all for coming, those who did. As far as reports, we go into reports, and all of my committee, all of my VPs have their committees off and running. So I'm very proud. We have a full list of student officers ready to act on behalf of the students. So it's, it's heartwarming, and it's incredible. And I'm so excited and very proud. And so on Mondays, we have Dewan in Petaluma. If you want to know about what's going on in Petaluma, come to that meeting on Monday. On Tuesday, Maddie, our EVP, is having our student, oh, I always say the wrong thing. It's SRC, our Student Representative Council. If you want to talk about policies, procedures, changes, we're going to talk to them on Tuesday. Jimmy and Dory, Jimmy has our finance committee. If you want to talk to SGA, you want to see about SGA's budget, you can come on Wednesdays in the morning. In the afternoon, you could talk to Dory. That's when we have our ICC meetings. On Thursday, Melissa has her Student Life Committee meetings, if you want to know about Student Life. And last, not least, on Fridays, we have the Council. Also, we, we're going to continue to be in the American Senate universe, but we are accessible forever. We have a advisor with the flip. Very excited as people are very out fundraising. We're hosting noon over at the Pub, so that we can get and get more involved. When Art came, he mentioned that they were following students have some food and resources as well. So the ways we're going to try to help in that way, the office hours over there, we're going to be doing some for SGA. We will be PR to promote sources and any other student engagement, including surveys and volunteer opportunities. It's called SGA First Days. And what's new at SGA Monthly, Weekly, Instinct. So look forward to October's Spirit Week coming very soon on both the Santa Rosa campus and the Petaluma campus. And when I say soon, I mean about two weeks. It's going to be spooky everything. Also, we did approve three students and one advisor to go to the CCC SAA Conference in San Diego. So we look forward to all the information and leadership that they bring back. SGA meets Mondays from 3:00 to 5:00 in the Academic Senate, no, Student Senate? It's not Academic Senate. It's just the Senate, Senate Chambers, or on Zoom. If you want to know any other information, please look for us at Santa Rosa Junior College website, SGA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. See, we do not have an AFA report today. So move on to SEIU with Sandy Segala.
Where do I start? Do I start with you at the beginning, or do I end with you? So, I don't accept. I'm upset. I thought we were going to leave at the same time, Dr. Chong. We said two more years. So I'm a little upset about that. But I want to thank you for all of your leadership. My first meeting with you with my predecessor, I was fearful. I didn't know what to expect meeting with you. And I've learned a lot, and I've learned to work with you. You've been a great leader, good recommendations that I've learned from you. And I want to appreciate and thank you for everything that you've done on behalf of SEIU, Classified, with helping and understanding different things that we've gone through that I've been able to share with you. And I appreciate working with you. And with that, it's going to take me down to a topic I'm going to talk about, about depression. So I'm not saying I'm depressed, but I could be. So, good afternoon, Board of Trustees Battenfeld, President and Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, and the students, our colleagues and community. And thank you for all of your attention today. So I just want to share a bit about mental health and wellbeing awareness. As students or faculty and staff return to campus, and this month of September being suicide prevention month, there were a few workshops that were held at the college on this subject. I attended as a president of SEIU Local Chapter, seeking needed information. I attended the HOPE panel on September 28, a conversation about suicide prevention. The workshop was put on by the Student Health Services and Student Government. The panel included students for recovery, second chance with Jimmy Brock, the SGA Vice President of Finance, Student Trustee Delashay Carmona Benson, the Licensed Marriage Family Therapist, Writer, Director, Producer Diana L. Grayer, PhD, and the Licensed Therapist, Spanish-speaking Latinx, Undocumented Native American and Justice-Impacted Populations, Birigida Alibon, and facilitated by a student, Maddie Cotrell, the SGA's Executive Vice President of Legislation and Co-President of Queer Action Family and Volunteer for Queer Resource Center. And it was presented by Jean Earlinborn from Student Health Services Leadership. I attended this workshop out of interest to learn more about if someone is leading down this troubled path in a state of mental disorder, panic or anxiety, depression, grief of loss, or identity struggles, including relationship difficulties, and perhaps substance use. Given what I learned about this information, as though my work, I have noticed behavior and defensive mechanisms, and how individuals connect or lack to connect, and how it affects others and how they perform, and has been very concerning. I feel encouraged by the district's opportunity for students and staff to obtain services like this, either through Student Health or the Employee Assistance Program through HR. This is a very delicate subject, and we need to be mindful if we were trying to help individuals with these conditions, in particular, as we come back to be person-in-person work, whether we're in class or working together. So we need to be mindful. We're not all okay. There's, we have differences in how we feel. I walked away from this workshop with this in mind. Our mind is powerful to where it can destroy you. Mental health is human. Seek therapy for help. These types of workshops are very important health reminders for all of us. And with that, I'll make another note. Our SEIU Executive Council, which Debbie referred to, we're having our elections right now for nine vacant positions. One, the presidency, my seat. One, the vice president slash negotiator. Three negotiators, three job stewards, and one secretary. The deadline for individuals to submit candidacy statements are by noon this Friday, the 14th, October 17. The statements will be posted, and the results will be posted on November 3 on the SEIU webpage. We are asking classified professionals to step up and get involved, as we need your participation for contract and labor support. And this concludes my report. And thank you very much. And Dr. Chong, I'm not missing you yet. Okay, you still have some time with me. Thank you.
Thank you. File Report Management Liaison Team Sarah Legos.
Good afternoon, President Battenfeld, members of the board, Dr. Chong, and college community. Sometimes it's nice to go last because then you get a chance to gather your thoughts. So first of all, congratulations, Dr. Chong, on your retirement announcement. I couldn't help but think while I was sitting here, listening to everyone talk about what your legacy is. And that is the hundreds of thousands of lives that you've changed over the course of your career. These are students who will never meet you, will never know what you've done, but who have their lives changed in some way by what you've done, which was to dedicate your career to higher education. So not many people can look back at their legacy and know that they had a hand in shaping others' lives, and know that they had a chance to impact a student, which will multiply for generations. So thank you, Dr. Chong, for your service and commitment to these students. You are championing them, and you've championed our college community. So thank you so much for that. And I'm looking forward to celebrating with you over the next couple of months. If you didn't spend Saturday, though, at Shown Farm, you missed the biggest fall festival yet. Connor Murphy and the entire Shown Farm team, led by Dean Benjamin Goldstein, hosted an estimated 3,000 Sonoma County residents at this annual event to showcase our agricultural, educational facilities and programs. Pumpkins, corn, strawberries, sweet potatoes, farm animals, hayrides, rotten apple slingshots, and so much fun. I know my daughter had some. It was a wonderful return of a family favorite event, and we are so grateful for the amount of work that went into hosting our community. Kudos to the Shown Farm team for a job well done. We'd also like to extend a warm welcome to Byron Reeves, the interim senior, senior dean of students. In this role, Byron will provide administrative oversight and leadership for the Student Affairs Cluster, including student life, equity and engagement, student rights and responsibilities, student housing, intercultural centers, facility use and events, and bookstore and food service operations. Welcome, Byron. We'd also like to welcome Rome Romanoli as the interim dean of Language Arts and Academic Foundations. In this role, Rome will provide administrative oversight and direction for this cluster, including departments like College Skills and Education, Adult Education, English ESL, Ethnic Studies, Humanities and Religious Studies, Philosophy and World Languages. Welcome to the team, Byron and Rome. We appreciated the comprehensive faculty and staff ethnic diversity report provided earlier today by Jean Rand and Sarah Hopkins. We're pleased to see improvements and look forward to continuing to see growth and change in these numbers as the college focuses on this important area of DEIA work. It can be hard to encapsulate everything an entire organization does into a few simple sentences, but Dr. Jeremy Smotherman and the Strategic Planning Coordinating Committee have created a powerful mission, vision, and values to lead SRJC into its next chapter, which is starting sooner than we all think. It's difficult to corral the hundreds of voices and opinions on the matter, but they have grounded our work by calling out the students we serve. Without those students, we aren't a college. The new mission, vision, and values reflect who this college is, as well as the work we strive to do. Transform the lives of our community members through educational programs and supportive student services. It's quite a big job, but this college is doing it. Thank you.
All right, that's the end of the reports part of the agenda. We're now going to move on to information items. First item is first reading of Board Policy 1200, Mission, Vision, and Values. And just to remind the board for procedures, this is the first reading, which means this is the appropriate time for board comment or discussion. When it comes back for the second reading, it will just be on the agenda for approval. So this is the time for discussion and information. And we're going to start with a presentation by Dr. Smotherman.
Good afternoon again. For President Battenfeld, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, College Community, it's my pleasure to present the work that we've been doing for BP 1200, our district mission, vision, and values. As a quick little background, As a quick little background, we started this process in February of 2021, the Strategic Planning Council, sorry, the public, oh my gosh, I'm losing it. PBCC, when you go on leave, you start forgetting acronyms. The Planning and Budget Council convened a Strategic Planning Coordinating Committee to work on our town halls to really make sure we are updating our mission, vision and value statements and gain the input from the entire college community. At that particular point in time, we were still mainly doing things over Zoom. So we had Zoom meetings every Friday, second and fourth Friday. And we also provided asynchronous opportunities for people to provide input. Information was given to academic senate, information given to the Classified Senate, SEIU, AFA. There are also members of the management team who are present and part of the coordinating committee as well. From all of the different feedback that we received over, when I did my last count, over 180 individuals participated in the town halls, many multiple town halls. And they provided a great amount of feedback and data that the coordinating committee compiled together, analyzed and were able to distill into a mission statement, a vision statement and a value statement. On the behalf for everyone who may not have seen the board agenda, I will read them very briefly. So when it comes to our mission statement, Santa Rosa Junior College transforms the lives of our culturally rich student body, employees and community by cultivating a welcoming and anti-racist environment centered on social responsibility and cultural awareness. We offer exceptional teaching and learning in support of associate degree certificate transfer preparation, workforce preparation and community education programs integrated with comprehensive student support services. What I'd like to point out for this particular aspect of our mission, vision and value statements is that we started off saying what the goal of SRJC is, to transform markets in terms of the atmosphere that we provide that as well. And then the tool that we utilize, which is our education, education is still number one in terms of what we do. With the vision statement, Santa Rosa Junior College commits to setting the standard and cultivating an accessible, open, barrier free, sustainable environment for students, employees and the community. The college envisions equitable, impactful, transformative, enriching and holistic learning opportunities that inspire our students to thrive. Again, students are at the center of it in terms of what the outcome is. And they were expressing, really the atmosphere that we provide, making sure that we include aspects of sustainability, anti-racism, diversity, equity and inclusion. For our value statements, Santa Rosa, sorry, Sonoma County Junior College District values a healthy and resilient college grounded in kindness, innovation, collaboration and restorative justice that identifies and removes oppressive structures. Teaching and learning that encompasses excellence, freedom and responsibility in academics that promotes civic engagement, a level of learning and success for all students. Community engagement and relationships founded on cultural competency, trust, embrace difference and interconnectedness. Well being centered on physical and mental wellness of all members of our community. Integrity that emphasizes honesty, transparency and ethical engagement. Effectiveness and district stability that supports fiscal responsibility, planning centered on student needs. And we also have our responsibility to the environment, society, expressing our commitment to sustain sustainability and social equity. The key thing when you're looking at all the different aspects of our mission, vision and value statements is that one, it keeps students in the center. It identifies the culture that we want to have on, within our district, within outside of our community and the impact that we have, not only to our students, but to every single employee that we have here at SRJC. It's very difficult to encompass everything for everybody, but I feel like the mission, vision and value statements to accomplish that goal, especially when I'm listening today in the board meeting, when I've heard the words of fiscal responsibility, mental health, well being, interconnectedness, collaboration, kindness. I think those words in and of themselves show that the mission, vision and value statements that are put together by the coordinating committee and vetted through a pretty lengthy process because now we're eight months into it, really represent really what's going on for SRJC, where we want to be at now, as well as where we want to be at in the future. So with that, I will stop my presentation if there are any comments for President Battenfeld.
Thank you. You have board member comments or questions?
Hi, thank you for bringing this forward. I, there's a little bit of a typo, I think, in the, it says that the first reading was in September and that we're doing a second reading right now, but I think that's probably just a typo. This is a, yeah, okay, that's a, it's our first reading. And just to be clear, because there was a reference by a previous report that we will be receiving comments about this. But process wise, this has been going on for eight months. There's been town halls, there's been involvement of the academic senate and all of the shared governance groups have all participated in this and all support this.
Correct, correct. So before anything comes to the board in terms of board policy, because this is policy beyond just the aspect of our mission, vision and values. It must go through college council first to ensure that the process was followed. So college council did approve before we put it to the board. So everybody has been a part of it.
Just because it was referenced that we were going to receive something by mail today, is that?
I believe the reference was for academic senate. There was additional discussion in academic senate and there is additional comments that we wanted.
Okay, just comments, okay, thank you.
And again, to clarify, this is our initial statement. And like our previous mission, vision and value statement, then later we'll come back with more of the specific objectives. But this, this is going to set the tone for then the other items that'll, you know, be explained in more detail. So as we develop those, there'll be more options for input and discussion. And we're, this is just the beginning of the process. We have our initial set of, you know, this is where we want to be. This is, and then we'll be continuing with the, as part of the strategic planning. I just wanted to kind of clarify that for me and for everybody else.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, that is correct. The mission, vision and values are very important for us to be able to set our objectives and goals. So this is the first part of the strategic planning process in and of itself. But really that work on the objectives and goals need to follow this mission, vision and value statements being presented to the board.
Great, thank you. Student trustee?
I just want to personally thank you and the crew. I know I have rode with you and I have witnessed some crazy meetings when it comes to just one word. And how long, you know, should we say nice? No, let's say it fair, no, let's just use good. Or I'm just being really nice with those little small words. But it has been a lot, a lot of work and I hope that the board just understands that it has just been hours and hours of this. And you have held strong with everyone going back and forth. And, and everyone was very respectful. We all agreed to disagree at times and it was a long process. And I just want to thank you for being such a great leader.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? I also just want to, yeah, thank the group for, thanks for everybody who participated and it's, you know, thanks, thanks for the work and, and, you know, I think it's a really good result that you're presenting us. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, so, and this will be back for a second reading, in which case it'll be approved next month. All right, now we have ACCJC or WASC accreditation update with Dr. Holcomb.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Chong, our president. Thank you, sir. And good evening, members of our college community. I'm, I'm happy to give an update about our accreditation response plan. So just some, some quick background, you know, we, our accrediting commission is ACCJC, the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, that's a branch of WASC, Western Association of Schools and Colleges. And as part of that, we're on a seven year accreditation cycle. So we're just coming off this process in this past spring, where we did our self evaluation report, also known as our Iser. We had a peer review team site visit. And then the peer review team wrote a report and sent it to the commission. So we're just coming off of that process that we do every seven years. As a result of that, over the summer, we received an action letter on June 14th. And the action letter that was from the commission, it provided three commendations, two compliance requirements. It did reaffirm our accreditation for 18 months. And it's required, it's imposing or requiring that we provide a follow up report and a follow up site visit. So I'll go over this now. Our commendations, so one of the accommodations that we received was regard, in regards to exemplary library learning support and student support services, especially in light of recent tragic calamities, such as the wildfires and, and the pandemic. So kudos to those teams, that's very noteworthy. We received a commendation for our student housing project, another wonderful project for the college. So great job on that work. And we, the third commendation we received was with regard to our long term, long range plan for fiscal integrity or fiscal stability. So in those three areas, we got commendations and I think we need to reflect upon that and we can take pride in that. However, there were also two compliance requirements where it was identified by the commission that we're not meeting the standard accreditation standards. They both pertain to student learned outcomes or SLOs. So we know the work that we need to do. And, but, so, so one area where we need to get into compliance is with regards to the disaggregation of SLO data. We need to look at it by sub populations according to demographic groups that we determine. So that's one area where we, we're, we're laser focused on doing some work. And the second one, the second compliance requirement deals with developing a sustainable process for regular assessment student learn outcomes and for ensuring that we have student learned outcomes on our core syllabi and on course outlines. And so we have some work here that we're going to do as well. So to summarize, we, we have a follow up report that is due on October 1st, 2023, where we have to describe how we've come, how we've made adjustments and we're now meeting the standards. After they receive the follow up report, will, there will be an additional site visit where they may have additional questions and want to look at evidence. And then I wrote down this date or included this date because it's kind of a pivotal date we're gearing toward. There's a commission meeting scheduled for January 2024. That'll be the first opportunity where they can look at the work that we've done. They can give us a clear bill of accreditation for the rest of our accreditation cycle. So that's what we're aiming toward. I do want to be clear, so this is, this little excerpt that you're going to, that you see comes directly from the action report. And it says, if the institution cannot document that has come into compliance within the designated period, the commission will take adverse action. So this is serious, but we have a plan and we're on it. We're laser focused and I have a lot of trust in my colleagues, our college community, that we will come together to do this work and we will get to where we need to be when we need to get there. So just a few more, so let me go over the timeline with you. So this semester, we are adopting new SLO software that will help us to disaggregate student learning outcome assessments. That's a key step. We have vendor demonstrations scheduled for later this month. We're allocating resources toward SLO coordination with two new SLO faculty coordinators. We're in the process for identifying who they will be, but we've had applications for them. Also, as our senate president mentioned, the fact that the academic senate is organizing a, an SLO faculty work group who will help us, partner with us and really drive, drive this work. And then we're, they're going to be part of a fuller accreditation response team that will help us get into compliance in, in these areas that have been identified. That's this semester. Next semester in the spring, I'll begin to draft, you know, the, I'll begin to work on a preliminary draft of the follow up report where I'm indicating how we've made the adjustments, we're now in compliance with these different areas. And then by the end of the spring, we'll review the draft, the follow up report with the college community. Over the summer, I'll be able to finalize the follow up report, begin preparing for the follow up site visit. The accreditation response team will remain engaged over the summer. And then in the fall, we will have, we'll make a presentation to the college community of the follow up report that indicates clearly how we've come into compliance and we're now, you know, really up to speed in this area. If there's desire, come back and do another board presentation, possibly a September board meeting or at another time, the board's choosing in discretion of the president. And that will allow time wise for, for us to then submit the follow up report by October 1st, host the site team visit and have the, the commission meeting be ready for that, that meeting in January of 2024. So if you, if you want, if you have interest and want to learn more about what SLOs entail at SRJC, there's a link that you could click on. But again, I think that this is critical work that we can do together, that we are doing together and that we will get where we need to be in a lot of time. So I trust our college. And again, the last thing I'll say, and our, our leader here, Dr. Chong, has sometimes pushed me on this, is to remember not just the bureaucracy of it and the compliance of it, but how it's meaningful to support, to support students, to make this work meaningful to student learning, student engagement. And so we're leaning into that, that aspect as well. So with that, I'm happy to open up for questions.
Thank you. Board member comments or questions?
Yeah, just, I think that's just a really important point you made at the end, just not looking at this as sort of a compliance issue and a, and a, and a process issue, but really looking at how can we take these learnings and then integrate them back into the college and help us? So it's sort of, you know, knocking, not to have any, you know, PETA folks here knocking out, you know, a couple of birds with one stone. I think the only question that I have is, it's, it seems to me, without having looked at the SLO or the software and understanding how the extent that we need to, to sort of build out these processes, that the data itself is fairly easy to get once we have those software and that technology in place and we're in the process to do that, right? It's not, it's not a lack of not having that data, it's just a matter of putting in the infrastructure to get it.
Correct, yeah, that's absolutely right, thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, thank you. And, and I do, yeah, I commend you for the work, you know, you know, I think it was, in general, I think we have to keep in mind that it was a really, really positive accreditation visit, all the commendations we got where other colleges are facing different fiscal and, you know, other overall big issues. I mean, these are significant issues, but still I think it's, you know, it's very doable for us as a college to achieve. And I think you're right, everybody's, you know, it's, it's all about helping students and that's the whole point of the accreditation standards is that we're doing as much as we can to, to help students be successful. So, and, and like you said, yeah, I think it's, it's laid out what we need to do. And so I look forward to seeing further reports on how we're progressing, but thank you.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you. And you're right, we are here in Petaluma, which is exciting for us. Dr. Chong, President Battenfeld, Board of Trustees and Communities. As Executive Dean of SRJC Petaluma, it's my pleasure to host you on our beautiful campus today. And it's even more of my pleasure to host you in this meeting, in this beautiful award winning space that you're sitting in now, our Student Success and Engagement Center, which will be the focus of our presentation today. The center represents a vision collaboratively constructed by students and staff over several years. Its intentional structure of providing a safe, fun and engaging center while being surrounded by our student success team and other supportive staff is at the heart of our philosophy here on campus, that we welcome, guide and engage every student to their educational goals. It is now my pleasure to introduce Michelle Vedari, our Petaluma Director of Student Engagement and Support Services, to tell you more about the special place in which you sit. Michelle?
So good evening, President Battenfeld, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, College Community. The last time I presented to you, I presented the outcomes from the first year launch of the Welcome and Connect Center in the Santa Rosa campus. So it sort of feels we're coming a little full circle because part of what I'm going to share tonight is how we reorganized our services into this space and opened up the Petaluma Welcome and Connect Center. Going to go back. So I want to first acknowledge the community who supported the redesign and rebuild. Vision was impeccable and I was fortunate enough just to come along in the move in and service design stage. So this is the new front of campus. So that's reinforced by the signage, the location of the Welcome and Connect Center. It's the main site for student events. And then just beyond this building is the new Student Support Center in Building 600. And this is the Welcome and Connect Center. So the Welcome and Connect Center team is co-located with- with admissions and records. And they also help with student accounts, student employment, and financial aid. And the Welcome ambassadors sit at the reception area. And they serve students with onboarding needs. They service the Office of Student Life. And they also provide basic needs. Just behind the desk is a fully stocked food pantry. Now through that hallway, giving you a virtual tour, even though you're here, but you could do it in actuality when we're done. But through the hallway are other student engagement amenities. So we have the game room and the laundry room. And so these are services aimed at keeping students on campus between classes and during their study time. And so the overall goal is retention and completion. Right. So the kitchen area, it's not only the student lunchroom, but it also is an extension of our basic needs program. So following our free farmers markets, we do cooking demonstrations in that area. So we use ingredients from the free farmers markets and the food pantry. And we show students how to make a nutritional nutritious meal with what we've provided them. So students who attend are provided the instruction, a meal kit, and a recipe card like you see here. And you met the student success team up here, coaches here before. So they're located in this area. And now they work supporting students with those skills you see here in the image in this common space here in the center. So one highlight of note is that during our last normal academic year, students who were served in their cohort had a fall to spring persistence rate 25% greater than the district as a whole. So and they also remained pretty active during the pandemic. And I'm super happy to share that we're we just expanded our hours. We're open until 8:00 PM Monday through Thursday in this space. And in addition to being a place of student community, faculty often hold office hours in here as well. And learning communities and support programs like EOPS and Fuente have held events and workshops in this space already. And then last year, this center was the location for the Fashion Studies Capstone Fashion Show. So it's definitely being used already. Now partners like the Career Hub and Financial Aid have been holding office hours in this space as well. So in addition to serving students day-to-day financial aid needs in the Welcome and Connect Center, the Santa Rosa Financial Aid Office comes here once a week and holds appointments for students who need more elevated support for complex situations. And we also invite others to share the space as well. And the heated canopy area was a true gift during the peak of the pandemic. It served as the outdoor study space. It was the dance floor for the BSU's winter solstice. And it continues to be the spot for the free farmers markets. So as design, students can go into that door adjacent to the canopy and grab free milk and free eggs from the refrigerator and serve themselves during the free farmers markets. So in its first year launch, the Welcome and Connect Center, which is in the front of the house, we collected our wins a little bit differently because of the pandemic. So while we will measure our baseline data for students who receive those transactional service upon their semester completion rate, last year, we focused on all the efforts we made to like to get here. And so our mantra was, let's build it as if they will come. And they finally came. But as such, we've been open Monday through Thursday since August of 2021. And the Welcome and Connect Centers, both of them have joined forces with student outreach in being one of the teams to quickly respond to like emerging and temporary district student support needs. So in that spirit, they helped students transition into the vaccine mandate last October through January. And they also ensured students have food and access to student life opportunities as we reopened. And then you'll see here, we were able to creatively create opportunities for student engagement throughout the pandemic last year. And we believe it created a really strong foundation for what we're seeing in here today. And by we, I do not mean me. This is the team of Petaluma Student Services. I've worked at two districts, which each had a big campus and a small campus. They worked at each of them. And the beauty of Petaluma Student Services is they act as a whole unit. So instead of it being a division of different departments, everybody collaborates and that made all of these activities we've done possible. And I thank you for the time and welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yeah, can I just say that I think you, in my opinion, you absolutely nailed this. I think that there's so much that we can talk about in terms of the second and third order effects on students and on faculty and the community with a space like this that, having been here 2,000 years ago, when I was the JC, this is just really, really special. This is really, really special. And I think it's it's a big deal. So kudos to you and the entire team and, you know, fantastic job.
Thank you. I really take no credit. It was really all designed. I just got to like put it into action. Thank you.
I would just say too, that when we had, I referenced a community event that was here, and some people never left this room for the whole. I mean, they were just enamored. And it was huge.
Yeah, it's that sticky feel, sticky campus that Matthew was aiming for. It's a good space.
When I first started SGA, my position was here in Petaluma. And this is when we started picking out color furniture. And when I walk in here, I'm just amazed at it. And I'm so proud of all the work. I know you put in a lot of work and a lot of hours and and Deborah, maybe she's on Zoom. And everyone at the at the fundraiser, I got to meet the actual people who put this together and the construction people. It was just awesome. And just how this is brought alive and you're keeping it open till eight o'clock, that's amazing. That's amazing. And so I'm just gonna say on behalf of the students, thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's amazing.
Well, I appreciate you being a whole contributing force in the design of this.
Thank you very much for your report. Thank you. All right, number four, we have a report on the A2M International Conference in Accra, Ghana. And I think Dr. Chong is gonna start it off.
You're gonna start it off? Yeah, I just want to introduce to the college community this wonderful presentation we're about to see. I saw it and blew my mind at Cabinet. And I want to appreciate Byron Reeves and Regina Mahery, George Salu and Cherry for bringing this to us as an opportunity for the JC to really support a trip that I think was transformational and a pride of great professional development opportunity for us to to be part of, I think, something that's really forward-thinking and transformational. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Robert Atherton to introduce the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chong, President Battenfield, Board of Trustees, College Community. Last month, well, actually, it's three weeks ago, I think. It's very recent. That's right. That's right. Byron Reeves, Candy Bridgers, Regina Mahery, and Dr. George Salu joined over 30 other California community colleges, along with CSU and UC practitioners, to attend the All African Diaspora Education Summit in Accra, Ghana, hosted by A2M and the University of Cape Coast. They're here today to give a presentation about their experience, what they learned, and how they would like to apply that learning and equipping the college with tools to build and better serve the African Black community here at SRJC. The ultimate goal is to uproot systemic anti-black policy and structures that may exist at our college and in the California Community College system. Here today, Candy Bridgers, who's our interim foster youth coordinator. And as you've already heard a couple of times, our new interim senior dean of students, Byron Reeves.
That intro was real. Dr. Chong, President Battenfield, Board of Trustees and College Community, thanks for having us today. I've been introduced like five times, so I'm not going to introduce myself. I do want to say, though, in this space, this is home for me. This is where I started. This campus is where I started. Shout out to all my Petaluma people. Woo, woo! Petaluma in the house. Matthew, you did an amazing job. And I was just happy to see the student success team here. That's how I started. So anyways, I just wanted to say I'm home and it feels good to do this presentation. Home and home is very apropos for where we went in our journey back to Africa. And I want to thank the college community for sponsoring this trip and this work. And so since 2020, our nation and our college had to really come to terms with the anti-black and oppression of the Black community in its country, in California, and on its campus. And we did somewhat. Okay, cool. And in this picture, you'll see Dr. Corey Timberlake, who's one of our Black psychologists here. And we have work to do. And I applaud my college community for engaging in that work. Since 2020, I think we had almost 100 faculty, staff, administrators, managers, students engage in work that was called on us by our BSU to do through communities of practice, through blackouts and call-outs, Dr. Sean, through our BSU, our strong BSU, our college community had to engage in this work. And we had to figure out how to center Blackness at this campus. And and for the most part, we did. But this work was for us. And this work was going back. We joined over, as Dr., as Robert said, over 30 other California community colleges who sent over, some of them sent 30 people, right? So we sent four, but some of them sent 30 people because this is how serious this work is. And we sent our four and we sent the strong four. And and we engaged in work. This was not a trip. This was not an adventure. We started at 7:30 every morning and we ended at 7:00 PM every night, working in a group with folks to really figure out how we can bring this work back to California as well as decolonizing what's happening in Ghana. I'm gonna let Candy talk about our some of our activities there. And yeah, thank you.
So while we were there, as Byron said, it was a very impacted days, right? Literally 12-hour days. So we did quite a few things. One of the very first things that we did was we visited the Cape Coast Castle. And I bring that up because as excited as I was to go to a different country for a summit, one of the questions that sat with me was, why are we going all the way to Africa, right? Because I've been to many A2M conferences here in California. And one of the things that I will say is that it was way more impactful, having been in the space of where our ancestors came from, to also learn about practices that we needed to support students here back in America, right? So one of the very first places we went to was the Cape Coast Castle, which is where we was one of the main hubs of where slavery went through, right? So we walked in those spaces. And we got to experience those spaces in person. We also heard from many professors that gave us a lot of information about Pan-African centered education, right? And Pan-African centered education, in my opinion, is centered in cultural sovereignty, right? And so it was a very impactful trip. And so I apologize, I don't know how to use this little clicker. Okay, thank you. And so one of the biggest things that we are bringing back and that we learned about was that the educational systems in America were not built to support Black students, right? So the only way that we can move forward is by dismantling and then reconstructing all of our educational systems. And that is essentially the best way to support Black students. Otherwise, until we get there, we are just placing Band-Aids over our current systems that we have. Some of the other things that we experienced while we were there was, thank you Byron, was the effects of colonialism, right? So it was very present in Ghana as it is here within our communities in America, right? And I just want to share a little tidbit with you all that's kind of off the record that I didn't plan. But one of the things that we learned was that the people who upheld the systems that upheld the slave trade, essentially, they didn't just go away, right? So they are still very prevalent in Ghana and in Africa. One of the biggest companies is Nestle, right? And so very prevalently everywhere in Ghana, there are Nestle signs. They're serving you Nestle cocoa. There's Nestle products, right? And so one of the biggest soccer teams also is upheld by a person who essentially was one of the main people who upheld slavery. So I say that to say that the effects of colonialism is still very prevalent in Ghana as it is here in the US. And so and that's for mental and emotional spaces. So I'm gonna pass it back over to Byron.
It's hard to cover that seven days and whatever, however many minutes we have. And the impact is tremendous. And so what we what we want to do here is think about the responsibility our community has to doing this work, to moving this work along. And it's not just the work of the four folks that went, but it's all of y'all's work. This is a calling to the community to start to send to this work. This is a call into the community that this trip comes up again, that we should be sending 42 people and that people in this room should go and experience what it is to center African students and the African experience. And so what was super dope and what was awesome is that we get to come back. And not only do we bring back work, but we bring back joy. We bring back smiles. We bring back the life of our students here. We celebrate our life of our students here. And we continue to do that work. And we are happy to do that work. There were UC folks there. There were CSU folks there. We built really great relationships. And we want to put that work back on our college. Let's build those relationships on the backs of the work here and not the back the backs of Black folks here. And so we are happy, we are joyful for the opportunity. And we just hope that our community takes this opportunity to step up to the plate and do what's right, to rethink every system, every policy with an African-centered lens and to undo some of the harm that's been done to the Black community here. And so please feel free to reach out to Dr. Salu and shout out to Regina. I hope she gets better. And Candy, if y'all want to hear more about our experience, but I'm well, happy to take any questions. And again, thank you, Board, for allowing this opportunity to to go do this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments or questions?
Of course, Delish, I got a question. My chief question is, why wasn't the president of BSU taken on this trip? Or the student trustee?
Question for the retiring president. No, so this was this. So this trip was 100% faculty, staff, and administrators, and the Board of Trustee, Patricia Hayes, was also in the building. And so this was all this was all for us. But A2M does sponsor African-American males to go back to Africa every year. And they go to different parts of Africa. So next year, hopefully, we include students and whoever the BSU president is, we definitely want to take.
I will congratulate whoever that person will be. It will not be me. But I do suggest that you do take students. But I do suggest that you do take students with this to, I think this would have been an awesome experience for any of the, of our black students, it would have been great. And I think the job well done, I think this is great. And I totally agree with you. I know we have spent many hours fighting for our demands to be met. We've worked very hard with BSU. And I just want to know, just say that those demands are still, like I'm taking off that trustee hat and putting on my BSU hat, those demands are still on the table. And we may seem quiet, but we certainly have not dropped the ball. We're still having those demand strongs and everyone will be hearing the new demands that are coming out pretty soon. Thank you.
Trustee Martinez? I just wanted to say that this is super dope, very exciting for you guys. I've gone to South Africa, I had to do research on the education and the disparities and all of that. And I feel, I feel for you guys, I think this is an amazing experience because sometimes you do need to go home and reevaluate and then reevaluate what we already know and don't know. And really deconstruct a lot of the, what we've been raised with, especially in the US context. But I think this is an amazing experience and I do hope that I'm in for the challenge, but that the board and our community does take on the challenge of how to do, we decolonize and deconstruct higher education because it is a big issue. And it's not just affecting African-American communities, affecting a lot of our communities. But going back to even do the employment and our biases, I think that's part of what is a bias. How does that work? Because we can do all of this work to hire people, but how do we do it internally? To reflect, right? Like that experience, to understand what that means, to be uncomfortable, become, never become comfortable with uncomfortable, but be uncomfortable and be okay with that. And then move from there so that you can grow, especially as someone who works in higher ed. I completely, you know, understand and I was really excited when I heard that you guys were going because I thought, in my head, I'm like, yeah, you always need to go home and see those things. You know, someone who can go home, like literally, I can fly, you know, anytime. I can see how our systems are built and what that means and then what it means for us in this other context. So I'm excited for you guys. And like again, we hope that we take the challenge and continue to be working on this.
And thank you also. And again, I don't necessarily want to give people more work to do. But I do think, just as a former high school student, it just sounds real exciting. And I'm really hoping that as we, you know, I think it's great, the partnerships with CSU and UC. But I'm also hoping we can share some of this work and knowledge with some of our K-12 colleagues too as well, especially since, you know, yesterday was the old Columbus Day, which at least is part, one of my grandkids again, experienced not such good information about one of the first enslavers, you know, in the Americas and still not getting good curriculum. So I think, you know, whatever we can do to decolonize the curriculum all the way back to preschool. But anyway, thank you very much. All right. Next item is just to acknowledge the Sixth Annual Undocumented Student Week of Action, which we already had a public comment on and I appreciate the LFSA bringing that up and emphasizing that. And again, I think Dr. Chong just wants to say a couple of things about it.
Yeah. No presentation. I'd just like to reinforce what was said by LSFA. And we support that. And this is a time where the JC needs to stand strong in support of any anti-immigrant, any anti- undocumented folks. We've already taken a strong stance during the previous administration and now it's wearing its ugly head. And I think just we need to be, stand firm and let the college community know that community colleges are access for all. And I didn't say all, but asterisk, except so-and-so. So we need to continue to keep community colleges accessible to all. So I appreciate the board's support of this and it means a lot to the community. We've had too many people in the community at the college and in our Sonoma County live in the shadows. And it's time for everybody to come out in the shadow, enjoy the sunlight. And that's what we saw yesterday at the beautiful Native American Indigenous Peoples' Day. And people feeling the sunlight and coming out of the shadows. And that has to happen for all people, ethnicities, different religions, LGBTQ. You know, we're a big tent at SRJC and we have to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment on this item? And again, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that there's two, there's for the services or information, there's a webinar from the Community Foundation and then there is programming from the Dream Center on the campus. So just to clarify, because we're doing it the same. And then, so that's why I want to clarify that there's opportunities for you, especially administrators and all that within the Community College Foundation webinars. And then there is programming, obviously around students and things like that on the campus for that week. In case you are like, I don't know what to attend, there's different options for you.
And then the last information item is just the board nominating committee appointments. And again, this is a committee that will bring, in November, that will bring forward nominations for board officers for next year. So I'm going to appoint trustee Fishman, Linley and Cundy to this committee. And again, they'll bring forward their recommendation for officers for next year. And then in December, it will be an agenda item for the board to vote and approve a slate of officers for next year. So, thank you. All right. Thanks for everybody. We're going to take just a real quick stretch break. So everybody can, again, since we had a mention of mental health and physical health, everybody get up and stretch and then we'll see you very shortly. That's why I have a gavel. I've never gotten to use it before. All right. Thank you. And we'll now continue our meeting with E, with the consent agenda. And we have a consent agenda items, one through 16. Are there any that any of the trustees wish to pull and put on the action agenda? All right, then I need a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items, one through 16, please. All right. And again, this does not need to be a roll call vote now that we're here in person. So all in favor? Aye. And you oppose? All right, moving on now to the action agenda items, starting with F1, personnel actions for October 11th, 2022. I need a motion and a second, please. All right, is there any public comment? Any board member comments? All right, then, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose or extension? All right, moving on to F2, August 20, August 19th, 2022 to September 15th, 2022 warrants. I need a motion and a second, please. All right, all those in favor? Any extensions? Student trustee Benson? Is abstained, I believe, from her vote. All right. Number, now F3, award of contract for the student information system software to Alucian for Banner SAS ERP Essentials. And we're going to have a presentation from Kate Jolly.
There we go. Great. Good afternoon, President Battenfeld, Board of Trustees, Dr. Chong, College Community. I am thrilled to be here to present the following two action items related to our transition to a new student information system or SIS. So back in 2017, we went through a selection process to replace our enterprise software and our SIS. That process concluded with a recommendation to pause to allow the vendors time to come up with some additional improvements that we were hoping to see in our new system. Fast forward to now, and our new process started about a year ago with an RFP for the new software. At the same time, we also did an RFP for a consultant to help assist with that process and facilitate the system demonstrations. Strata Information Group, or SIG, was the awarded vendor in that process. We did the vendor demonstrations in the spring. After that, a steering committee got together, reviewed the extensive community, college community feedback that had been received and recommended moving forward with a deeper dive into the banner system. During the summer, we worked closely with Alucian to identify and try to get past any areas of concern that had been identified by the user groups. We have now completed that process and I am happily confident um, to officially recommend that we award the contracts for the new SIS now. Um, so we quickly found out in this process that there is no such thing as one complete system out there. Uh, we, so we have a couple multiple, uh, multiple recommendations for you. So the first is banner, um, from Alucian to be the new student information system. In addition, there are a couple smaller modules that we're going to need to purchase separately that will integrate with banner. Um, these include Course Leaf for curriculum and TouchNet for student accounts. If the word for banner is approved today, we'll bring those forward to the next meeting for approval. In addition, as Dr. Holka mentioned, we are currently exploring student learning outcome software to address the accreditation recommendations. It's not part of this selection process, but because any software that we select for that initiative needs to integrate with our current SIS and our new SIS, we were carrying it out with the same, uh, process that we used. Um, finally, the other action item for you today is an award of the contract for change in project management to SIG. SIG was the successful vendor, as I mentioned, from the original RFP, uh, for consultant to support the process. They work at a national level and they have become very invaluable to us in this process. I am recommending that we award that contract under the administrative provisions of government code, um, that allow the district to contract for professional services without having to competitively procure it. However, um, to do our due diligence, we did do cost comparisons, um, with other purchasing co-ops to confirm that we were getting competitive pricing. So this, the SIS touches on, um, everyone in the district. I don't think anybody will escape being a part of this process. Um, the modules that we are looking to transition include the student and faculty portal, um, counseling and case management, which is our, our, the OPS DRD areas, admissions and records, financial aid, um, our student accounts, which is cashiering and then curriculum and scheduling. Uh, we have a document management function in it, CRM advise and, um, reporting. So this is a major commitment by the district. Um, we did anticipate this and we included it in the bond description that went out to the voters for Measure H and this will be paid out of Measure H funds through the IT, um, allocation. So that means that five years of software costs, um, will be about 5.9 million. For implementation, we are planning on internal and external support for that. That'll be an additional 5.96 million. Um, as part of the project, I'm including about 1.15 in the project contingency for an overall cost for five years of $13 million. So our next steps, um, if you approve the two action items in the agenda next, we will bring you the Course Leaf and TouchNet contracts next month and then we will finish negotiating the contracts and sign. We will then move into drafting the implementation process, creating the teams. Um, we hope to kick off January, possibly February of 2023. We anticipate this will be probably two to three-year implementation. It is quite extensive. There is a lot of design to do, testing, all of it, and then we will go live. So we will keep, um, up to date project information at the financeadmin.sanarosa.edu website. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any board member questions or comments? Thank you. And, um, thanks for everybody who participated in this. Right. It's, it's a big change, but it sounds like we need it. So. All right. Um, I need a, um, motion and a second, please, for, um, F3, award of contract for the SAS software.
Checking.
All right. Do we have any public comments? Or any board member comments or questions before we vote? All right. So then we're, um, voting now on F3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. All right. Um, and now moving on to, um, F4, it's the award of contract for services to, for implementation of the student information system software to Strata Information Group. Um, I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
All right. Any public comment? All right. Any board member comments or questions on this? All right. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or any abstentions? All right. F5, um, which is grants, new and amendments, including resolution 29 dash, um, 22. Um, I need a, um, motion and a second, please. Second. All right. Do we have any public comments? Or any board member comments or questions? All right. And as this is a resolution, um, then this is a roll call vote.
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye. Thank you. On to F6, resolution 30 dash 22, changes to the adopted budget. I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
All right. Any public comments? Um, board member comments or questions? Again, this is a roll call vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then finally, resolution 31 dash 22 for change order number nine for the Garcia Hall renovation. Um, this was discussed, um, in the earlier report. Um, I need a motion and a second, please. Thank you. Um, any public comments? Any board member comments or questions? Yeah. And thanks for the thorough explanation before. I appreciate it. Um, all right. Roll call vote?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Um, thanks for everybody for sticking with us and for, uh, a long, um, meeting. Thanks to Dr. Chong. Um, and again, I think I'll, um, adjourn in recognition for yesterday's Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, um, thank you and everybody have a good evening. We'll see you next month.